Back of the room, back of the hall. And we observed that here, open meeting time. Done and done. Ready to go when you are, Mr. B.
Hey, alright.
LB. This is gonna be fun, right?
Yeah, well, thanks for allowing us opportunity. I think we were scheduled a couple, two, three weeks ago to give you some data and information and provide a little bit more education on our South 13th Street Improvement Project to be implemented this fall. So, we're here today to share a little bit of, I guess, background on the project, some of the reasoning for the project, hopefully clear up a little bit of misinformation and some things that have been floating out there with just the street and its operations and safety characteristics. And then, gonna bounce through real quick, I know you got a couple other things on the agenda, but we'll allow Mark Lutcheharms, who's with me today, to bounce through kind of the project concept, show you sort of what the layout and the detail will look like. And then, Mr. Sean Reba with the South of Downtown CDO is here to provide a brief background on some of that prior work they've been doing and with that revitalization plan, kind of wrap it up. And then we'll entertain any Q and A if you've got that too. So, with that, I'll dive in.
Thank you.
Quick agenda, we're gonna talk about the improvement concept, a little bit of background on three-lane streets and four-lane undivided streets, those facility types, the project plan, and then again, we'll have Sean touch on some of those CDO activities. So, why a three-lane street? That seems to be some of the question of the day and some of those comments that we've responded to and put together information, really all through the kind of planning and design duration of this project. So, you see up there on the, on the screen, of course, four-lane undivided street simply means two lanes in each direction separated by a simple double yellow line. So, that's the, that's the current type of street we have out on South 13th Street as you leave downtown today, all the way north-south, traveling down to South Street at the, kind of the southern end or the terminus. Converting this type of facility to a three-lane street is something that's another tool in our toolbox when we talk about our sort of overall goals within the Department of improving safety of streets and traffic flow and operations on streets. Those are really big hierarchy goals that we have anytime. So, whether it's, you know, implementing roundabouts, flashing yellow arrows, doing new signal timings to make traffic flow better, adding right turn lanes at intersections, you know, a number of those types of countermeasures. Looking at a four-lane undivided street and evaluating it for implementation of a three-lane cross-section with a center turn lane is just another one of those typical things that we do, looking at data, engineering analysis, and how we can improve a current street segment. There's a long history of success of these, you know, locally, regionally, nationally, there's several agencies that are, that are doing exactly that. We can discuss that a little bit too, if you've got questions. This is something that Federal Highway Administration and lots of professional transportation agencies have been doing and recommending for about three decades now with, with a lot of these four-lane undivided street segments. So, really it boils down to kind of those three things. When, when we talk about how are they superior to an undivided street, it's really their safety, their operations, and then, in this case, whether we're looking at shoulders or bike lanes, or maybe some opportunities for some pedestrian enhancement at intersections, it really, we see it as a way to improve mobility and access for the users on the street as well. So, wanna talk just for a second about safety. This is kind of a biggie and it's not always maybe intuitive to folks, but this graphic up here shows you simply the reason why safety drastically improves with a three-lane street versus a four-lane undivided street. It's really about number of conflict points. So, mainline traffic versus crossing traffic, you, you basically reduce those conflict points from eight to four. In similar fashion, when you're talking about rear-end activity, travel along the corridor, you're providing that center turn lane for folks to get out of the way, that, that buffer, basically. So, that, that's a big, just fundamental reason that we see crash rates dramatically reduced, and we see that both here locally and in a lot of the national studies on three-lane streets versus these four-lane undivided segments. Again, eliminates a lot of that weaving. You can imagine, if you've driven that street yourself, when you stop in that inside-through lane and attempt to make a turn, someone is, you know, coming up pretty quickly behind you. A lot of times, if there's opposing traffic and that vehicle can't find a gap right-of-way to turn, the traffic that's behind in that inside lane will kind of move out to the right, and then that causes some more friction, kind of the slinky effect, we call it, in that outside curb lane. And so, this segment of, of South 13th Street, really from the downtown, about Lincoln Mall all the way down to south, it's got about a hundred access points, a little bit north of a hundred access points, whether that be driveways, block-by-block street segments, northbound, southbound, opportunities for people to turn is what causes that, that friction. So, and why that's caused, this graphic, hopefully if you can see this a little bit again, some of the reason for that kind of poor driving behavior and then folks just simply being able to not maybe make the best choice when they're turning is limited sight distance. So, you've got southbound vehicles opposing you. If there's vehicles in the inside lane, because you are offset and you're not head-to-head in alignment, as this graphic shows, you can't see those other approaching vehicles very well. So, you turn out across opposing traffic, and that's partly the, the reason for the left-turn crash pattern or the opposite-direction crash pattern that we, that we call it. So, sort of rear ends along the corridor with stopping in that inside-through lane is one phenomenon that we see all the time with those types of streets, but also this, this idea that sight distance and the visibility is, is decreased with this type of street section. Little bit on operations, again, I think the, you know, it's not surprising, a lot of folks, you know, think naturally if you would take away a through lane of traffic, or in this case, two, two, you know, inside lanes and you're putting in a center turn lane, well, obviously, you're squeezing down the capacity of the street and maybe, you know, not quite as many vehicles can traverse it or traverse it even well or during peak periods, and that's just, that's just not the case. Data shows us, analysis shows us, hundreds of case studies show us that three-lane streets move just as much traffic, if not more, oftentimes than a four-lane undivided street. And it's really because, again, of that friction in the traffic stream, of that north-south travel, and those folks that really wanna desire to, to turn out of those inside lanes. So, we see it as a way to smooth the traffic flow along there. You get people kind of lined up in that, in that singular lane. We can do some things by improving and adjusting some of the signal timing at a few of the signalized intersections along there. And again, just allowing those turns to be made out of a turn lane just fundamentally makes a huge difference. So, what's shown on this graphic today is, is this segment of 13th Street that's in question right now with the project. That's what's highlighted in orange. And so, if you look north of South Street, so the four-lane traffic volume that's shown up there, that, that current stretch carries about eight to 10,000 cars per day. Yeah?
I have a question. Um, you know, I, South 27th Street comes to mind, from South Street to Highway Two. How does that volume of traffic on South 27th compare to the volume on South 13th? Cause it, is that saying?
I don't have that number at the top of my head, but we've got a slide later if I can park your question.
Okay, what's that? I can't read that number at the top. What does it say?
Eight to 10,000.
Yeah, so the-
Eight to 10,000?
Yep, so the current traffic volume.
Yeah.
Yep.
You just have to keep your, your head. Okay, perfect. Okay, so eight to 10,000.
You need yours.
Okay.
So, what's shown in, what's shown in green on the graphic is the, the current stretch of 13th Street from South Street down towards Van Dorn. So, if you're familiar with, with that segment, that's a current three-lane street, similar to what we're proposing. So, from South Street to Van Dorn, that three-lane carries actually 12,000 to 14,000 cars per day, today. So, there's stretches of it that carry about 40% more vehicles than this four-lane street The, the graph and the information on the bottom in the lower right of that basically illustrates what the current crash experience is. So, when we look at crash rates, those exposures, the number of crashes per million entering vehicle miles, so it's a segment-based crash rate. As we've pulled the data for, I think the recent, is it five-year period? Basically, that crash rate down on the southern section, the existing three-lane street, is about 2.47 or just under two and a half crashes per million entering vehicle miles. Unfortunately, the crash rate up on this northern segment, the four-lane undivided street, is about three times higher than that. So, again, our local data, the current data over the last five years basically shows that high crash rate comparatively, four-lane versus the three-lane section.
Should you have absolute numbers? I mean, I see what the rate you're saying is, but how many actual crashes have happened on 13th Street from Lincoln Mall down to South Street in all of last year, for example?
Yeah, we've got those numbers. I don't know if we've got them here today, but we've got some in that, I think in the Q and A that we can pull together or, or send to you. I wanna say there's a number of, sticking in my head of about 160 crashes, and I can't remember what period that's over, but, yeah, we'll get you that info. It's a good question.
Councilwoman Gaylord Bear.
My question's related, and it's one that I've received from people who've written in, and that is just, how, how often are people actually wanting to turn, given that this is sort of a thoroughfare to downtown for the commuters who are riding in and opposing it? A lot of this is predicated on the idea that we're gonna stop crashes of people turning, but if in fact they're really just traveling north-south primarily, what kind of difference do you think we'll really make in terms of safety?
Yeah, um-
In terms of peak volume times?
I think during, you know, typical AM and PM peak periods, and it varies depending on if it's at a few of the more major east-west or cross-streets, but there's turn volumes along there of, you know, anywhere from 40, 50, 60 upwards of, I think, 100 vehicles per hour making those turn movements, whether it's a northbound left or a southbound left at a couple of those key intersection locations.
So, these are per-day figures. What about the peak volume hours, you know, morning-evening commutes? What are those traffic counts per hour?
They're roughly about 10% of that number, and that's a good sort of rule of thumb in the industry.
So, what you're saying is the traffic on those streets is evenly distributed throughout the day?
No, it's about 10% during each of the peak periods of that total 24-hour number.
So, 20% takes place in two hours of the day?
Yeah, yeah. So, generally, so if you look at a 24-hour number, pretend for a minute it's 10,000 vehicles per day in a 24-hour period, a lot of times, if we don't have data, a good rule of thumb that we try to gauge, or with Lincoln Streets, and actually, you know, it's, it's a good number to use nationally is 10% of that, so about 1,000 vehicles per hour traveling two ways on, on 13th Street. So, it might be 600 northbound, 400 southbound, but the two-way additive number during a peak period is generally about 10% of what that is.
So, have you done projections on what it would be five years from now?
We have. You know, usually in the built environment, we don't see a lot of growth in traffic numbers. So, you know, the, the steady growth rate that we see even on the fringe of the community might be 1, 1.5, 2% per year. Usually in the built environment, in these cases, we see a pretty flat-line growth because it's, it's sort of existing users or local built-out locations, unless there's some major redevelopment or something that would be driving a spike in traffic. Three-lane streets, the reason that we're really comfortable with these recommendations operate upwards into the kind of 18,000 to 20,000 ADT range. So, we'd have to see almost a doubling of traffic before we'd have sort of real capacity concerns.
See, that's kind of contradictory to some of the studies I've read, nationwide studies, like the Iowa Department of Transportation study that says, once you hit 1,200 vehicles in a peak hour period, then you start seeing congestion and, you know, traffic jams.
Yeah, and I mean-
That, that is what happened in Los Angeles and Denver, not Denver, but Detroit and in Portland, where they've had major problems with these kind of projects, and then when traffic counts went up, the thing just fell apart. And that, matter of fact, they're, they're so upset in those three cities, they've had citizens groups calling for reinstatement of the old way, and in, in Los Angeles area, they're doing a recall petition on a city council person who promoted this traffic diet on a major street, like, to their community, like 13th Street for her. So, I wonder how you, you respond to those experiences that are also out there. There's experiences out there you can show, hey, this is working great, and there's others where the people are just up in arms.
Right, what are you referencing?
I'm referencing all sorts of stuff online, stories from Los Angeles Times and other newspapers, Detroit, Detroit newspapers. You just, just Google road diet failures and you'll find a number of these stories. And so, I just wanna make sure that if we're gonna do this, we avoid it.
I wanna know how many slides you have.
Okay, we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep rocking and rolling. Anyway, wanted to mention the case studies, and yeah, I'd be curious to see maybe some of those others, but, but most of the information that we see from Federal Highway, NCHRP, Transportation Research Board, the Institute, several, several links. I think quite a few of those links are included in the copy of that memo that, I believe when we were here last time and had to present. I think we got Carl to drop a hard copy in your boxes, but anyway, we've got that we can recirculate too, but lots and lots of web links, research and data on those case studies. Couple I'll just look at here, ones that I was previously familiar with, up in Genesee County, Michigan, which is kind of the Flint metro area. A lot of their streets there, again, you look at the far column on the right, intersections that had reductions in the crash types and the, and the percentages. We talked about traffic volumes. You can see over there on the, this change column, what it was, four-lane to two-lane plus turn lane with bike lanes, lots of collision reductions, but the thing I would point out, and this is a lot of data from, you know, a little bit older, honestly, because a lot of the case studies that you'll see on some of these is, in the transportation industry, it's sort of old news. When we have this type of volume range and we do this type of a street, it's kind of become this obvious improvement. But in every single case, on these ones here that were documented in that TRB circular, the traffic volumes actually went up after they converted from four-lane to three-lane. Every one of those, the ADT increased. So, that just gives you, again, kind of a snapshot of that, smooth traffic flow, safer street segment, more users attracted to that type of a street. We don't see volumes, you know, that are choked and pinched down and, and like some of the, probably the feedback you've heard, so. So, really, at the end of the day, we see this as a, you know, something to enhance safety, improve the operations, really improve some of that mobility and access. There's guidance in here about when we conduct feasibility studies, detailed traffic analysis, really down on the left end of the scale at that 10,000 daily traffic. Some agencies really aren't doing detailed traffic study and feasibility work. We went ahead and did that in this case. That's up on the, the project website, you know, Mark can touch on that, but we're just really confident in these recommendations on this street, street segment for the volumes that are out here today and what we see as a forecast. With that, I'm gonna let Mark bounce through real quick, kind of the project plan for, for the, for the street.
Yeah, thanks. So, yeah, just talked a couple minutes about how we would go about implementing this project. First of all, as indicated on the project website, if you haven't already been there, we do have a copy of the traffic study that we did to kind of talk about how intersections would operate, the summary of crashes, and some estimation as to how many crashes we might be able to eliminate or mitigate with this type of a project. First of all, the slide on, on the screen right now, just orient yourself, the, the three panels, the upper or the top side of the left panel is L Street, then you scroll down, then go to the middle panel at the top, and then go back down, then go to the right panel and down, that'll get you to South Street. So, that's how that slide is oriented. And this just gives you an idea as to what those existing daily volumes are along this segment. And so, back on the only slide where we talk about eight to 10,000 vehicles per day, that's kind of the range, that's because it varies throughout the project corridor. So, just a quick summary there. So, again, the way that we would implement this project is simply through removal of existing and addition of new pavement markings and signs. No street curb modifications, no changes in the width to the overall street, a pretty simple project from our perspective of implementation of markings and signs. So, this first slide, as, as you know, the project is kind of different from north to south. The north, we have kind of a narrower street section, about 40, 40 feet in width, and then once we get south of roughly A Street, we get to a wider, about a 55-foot wide street. So, we talk about a north segment and a south segment, and that's what these next four slides will kind of point to. So, the north section is, currently today is, is four 10-foot lanes, two 10-foot lanes in the north of our direction and two 10-foot lanes in the southbound direction. Whereas on the, the south end of the project or south half roughly, again, we've got about four 10-foot lanes traveling in, two in the northbound, two in the southbound direction. And then on both sides of the street, we have about a seven-and-a-half-foot parking bay for on-street parking. I do wanna mention, as you'll see in the recommendation, we've driven 13th Street a lot over the last several months to kind of observe what that parking pattern is, and to be honest with you, the, the parking dynamics that we see on the east side of the street, hardly ever see a vehicle parked on that side of the street. On the west side, depending on time of day, we'll see anywhere from four vehicles to maybe 11 or 12 vehicles. So, you'll see how we've reflected that in the recommendation that we would propose to implement with that south segment. So, again, on that north segment, what we propose to do is we would take the, the four 10-foot lanes, convert them to three 10-foot lanes, so not altering the lane width by any means, and then replacing that fourth lane, because we have the available width to do so, with, with two five-foot bike lanes. One for northbound travel on the east curb and the opposite direction along the west curb. And then on that south segment, again, because of that, I guess I'll call it a dynamic or lack thereof of parking, depending on which side of the street that you're talking about for that south segment, we would propose to eliminate the on-street parking on the east side, still retain some on-street parking along the west curb to accommodate those users that we see today. Again, have three 11-foot travel lanes with a 11-foot center turn lane, provide what we call a buffer area between that travel lane and the bike lanes, again, because we have the available width to do so, and then again, provide the five-foot bike lanes, one in the northbound direction against that east curb, and the one for southbound direction that would be separated by the buffer that's between the bike lane and the travel lane and the parking. And so, again, a fairly simple, simple implementation process of going out there and removing existing, putting down existing markings and paint, doing some modest signing modifications, and the project for the most part is, is implemented. Again, I, I referenced our, our project webpage, if you haven't been there. You can either, I think, search for 13th Street or go to the Traffic Engineering page, and you'll provide, you'll provide links to the project page that has, again, the traffic study and a lot of the information that we're presenting in our remarks this afternoon.
Councilwoman?
Would you, would you go back to the slide with the, the layout of the lanes? Did you look at or consider the bike lane being adjacent to the, the right-of-way and the parking closer to the lanes of traffic? Did you consider that kind of configuration and what does the data show with that?
Yeah, we, we did look at that. One, one, I guess, downside, if you wanna call it that, that we've seen and heard from, from some of the experts that are doing this nationwide, is that when you put that parking within the street, so to speak, the drivers don't have a physical barrier from which they can use as a guide to put their vehicle up against. They're kind of guessing where that pavement marking line is versus kind of being able to fill, feel the curb that you're used to, to doing as you're doing some parallel parking. So, that, that's one of the primary reasons. Also, by putting the vehicles up against the curb, we, we still have somewhat of an impact with, when doors open with the bike lane, but if you would put that parking lane out in the middle of the street, so to speak, again, now you have the doors opening on both sides and creating conflicts on both sides of the vehicle versus just the one side when that parked vehicle is, is up against the curb.
When you talk about parking on the east side, do you see any increased parking in the evening and nighttime?
We have not. Again, we've made observations quite a bit. We've even received some feedback from the neighbors that live in the area and just have not seen the use of the on-street parking on the east side. Maybe occasionally we'll see one or two vehicles, but that's on a very, at least from our observations, on a very rare occasion. We've, we asked that question as part of some surveys we did at the public meeting. Didn't get a lot of feedback in terms of the need for that parking specifically on the east side.
What about parallel streets to 13th Street? Is there, and bicycle lanes? Are there streets parallel that have a lot of bicycle lanes already or that are considered more bicycle-friendly?
Well, certainly 11th Street, two blocks to the west, has bike lanes that were implemented some four, five, six years ago, I believe. Probably not a lot different in terms of the street character, other than the fact that the 13th Street has four lanes, probably carries a little bit higher traffic volume than 11th Street does.
14th Street?
14th Street does not have, until you get up towards the downtown area where, where there's the existing northbound bike lane north of L Street, there is no designated bike lanes in 14th Street today.
And what do you think, if any, have you looked into what impact this would have on traffic counts on 9th and 10th Streets?
Yeah, our expert opinion, I guess, if you wanna consider us experts, hopefully you do, is the fact that if you look at the ranges of traffic volumes that three-lane streets are able to carry, again, the fact that we're well below that at eight to 10,000 vehicles, sure, there's gonna be an occasional driver that chooses to use another street, but we don't see that diversion being significant whatsoever just because, from the data we have and the experience that we have in implementing these, we have a lot of excess capacity, if you will, to accommodate even additional vehicles that aren't currently using 13th Street.
So, this study was done in-house, right?
It was, yes.
Other questions?
Yeah, I, go, go ahead, Carl.
I was gonna ask about the, I think, 13th Street downtown is kind of an important piece of this too, in terms of traffic flow and better utilization of 13th Street if it were to be two, two-way so that south or northbound traffic going downtown can make that directly and not have to get off onto 14th or some other road. Is that, is that a part of this or, or not?
Yeah, you know, not a part of this immediate implementation or of the, you know, kind of the, the detailed analysis that we've done, but there are a couple things going on. The, the downtown master plan, of course, led by, you know, Planning Department and with Director Carey, you know, they're looking at downtown streets in general, opportunities maybe for a few of those that could be changed, modified. I know there's been discussion with, you know, even Mr. Eulen and, and kind of DLA about those couple remaining blocks of 13th that are one-way. What if that was two-way? Would that allow for this traffic to filter directly right into downtown? You know, there'd be some need to do some signal modifications at a couple intersections. There's been some excitement, I think, from a fraction of the businesses that would say, that'd be great for us, we'd have a, a two-way segment that would allow parking in front of a business. You know, there's some pros and cons with sort of in general, one-way, two-way street conversions, but, yeah, a lot of 13th is already two-way. So, that, that's been a question, I think, that the, the downtown master plan consultants are looking at, and certainly if businesses in the community decided that's a, a great thing, yeah, if, as you were northbound on 13th Street here, instead of being forced to make a right turn lane, you would just filter directly into downtown.
Other questions?
So, have you looked into any, any of the failures of this system around the country and to see how we can avoid those kind of results?
Well, you know, you were mentioning a few of those, and I'm, I'm not intimately aware of probably Detroit and some of those. You know, I have been aware of some complete streets, road diet, whatever the terminology you wanna use, some of the ones that, that I'm familiar with have been ones where they've converted a, a four-lane street all the way to a two-lane undivided, so double-yellow and bike lanes, or they've gotten rid of maybe a three-lane street to go just to one direction of traveling the way, and, you know, as you can imagine, that wouldn't necessarily eliminate some of the crash problems and things that we're here touting today, so.
Well, the one in Los Angeles was very specifically exactly this, and it's probably the most blatant example of community getting really unhappy very quickly at the results 'cause they did take a four-lane, exactly like we have there, and put it to a two-in-one. And people are unhappy enough that there's petitions going around the community. That's been in the newspapers.
I'm gonna leap from that one and ask the community guy, what is the community thinking?
Yeah, you're up. Couple last slides here, yeah.
Okay, we'll try to run through here.
I did finish, thank you, yes.
So, I'm Sean Reba, Executive Director of the South of Downtown Community Development Organization. Thank you for having me here today. Quickly, I just wanted to say I'm very excited about this opportunity. This has been an amazing partnership, working with the city, Lincoln Community Foundation, Everett Neighborhood Association, near-south Neighborhood Association. There's been a number of individual residents that have been going door-to-door for us too to, to, to talk about this issue, so I'm very excited about that. How we got here, you probably all remember the H3- How we got here, you probably all remember the H3 Plan. This plan was conducted, a very extensive public engagement process, over about a year and a half. This plan, as you can see, has lots of stuff in it, so it helped highlight the assets, sorry, and some of the challenges that we face in that neighborhood. And one of the things that came out of this plan was we need to create a community development organization that's geographically focused. So, here I am. We are focusing in a geographic area between, it's from Ninth to Seventeenth, L Street to A Street. Okay? And we have about 5,200 people in that area. Our role, the CDO, is going to be playing a part. We're going to be providing an ongoing coordinated framework for all community development work because there's a lot of work to be done. We are going to be focusing on safety. We're going to be focusing on infrastructure improvements. We're going to be focusing on housing, workforce development, and community engagement. So, what I know, we have Ninth, Tenth, Thirteenth, Sixteenth, and Seventeenth cutting right through this neighborhood. It's not real safe. We have three schools right within, right off of Thirteenth Street. So, you have Saratoga on South Thirteenth. You have Everett Elementary School just a block off Thirteenth. And you have McPhee Elementary. So, we have, and we have F Street Community Center right at Thirteenth and F. These are major hubs, lots of children, lots of people walking. We also know that this is a lower-income neighborhood, so a lot of people rely heavily on walking and biking. So, there's a lot of folks that don't have cars, so we need to make it safer. We also know that through this plan, and I'll read just directly from the plan, we have full, we have lots of support from the community on making this improvement. And I will read this directly from this plan that came out of this very comprehensive engagement process. Develop a Great Streets and Public Places Program. To maintain and improve walkability and pedestrian safety, bikability, upgrade street lighting, improve alleys and street pavement, et cetera, et cetera. So, I'm not making it up. This was a, this was a process. We also had a public hearing. We had over sixty people there, mostly in support, exciting. We've also been working with residents and my amazing colleagues, Isabel's here today, going door-to-door, going to different events. We got twenty more postcards that say they are very excited and support this. What else do we have? This is a natural connector. What else can I say about this? We have a lot of things that are going, that say that this is the right thing. Oh, we've also went on, we've done door knocking. We went to eighteen hundred doors so far in the area. Again, we continue to hear that people want safe streets to walk across and they like the bikability of the neighborhood. So, as a result of this study and our door knocking, we were able to successfully secure a national grant. I think it's the Funders Network Association. We got a grant for $40,000. And it's not just to focus on the pedestrian safety, but it's also looking at expanding community gardens. It's looking at the lighting. It's also looking at making sure we get all of our ash trees replanted, so we have a plan to replant all those trees that are being removed right now. So, it's a little bit of a larger effort. So, just so you know that. What we're most excited about, again, the partnership and the support that we have gotten is really important to us, and we think that this is very cost-effective because, as Mark said, we're not doing anything major. We're doing a lot of painting. That's all we're doing. We have a grant to cover most of the costs. So, if we can lower accidents, increase safety, and as Lonnie says, make the traffic continue to be smooth, I don't understand why we're having an argument about this project. So, I think it makes perfectly good sense for us to do this. So, I commend the city and the response to the need of the community. This has been fantastic to work with the city on this, so.
I think Councilwoman Lamb has a question.
I do. Thank you for being here today. So, you mentioned the grant and the different uses of the grant for replanning the trees and lights and so forth. Does all or a portion of that grant, is it dependent on this project as it's being put in front of the council right now, presented to the council?
Well, I was earmarked for this particular project, but we have until the end of the year to spend the money.
Okay, so, does this project include the tree planting and the other things that you mentioned? Or is it, that's just one of the uses and this, that you're attending, this grant is intended to use to remark the streets?
So, it's a layered approach. Not everything's going to be along Thirteenth Street, but we are focusing G, F, D area between Eleventh, Twelfth, and Thirteenth Streets. So, that's kind of our concentrated area. So, it's almost kind of like a layered approach. We just want to make sure we're making the greatest impact with the little bit of money that we have. So, I don't know if I answered your question or not.
Well, not really, but, so, how much of it is going towards?
So, of the grant, we got a $150,000 grant.
Okay.
Forty thousand of that is going to go specifically to the, to making it safer for the crosswalks and the biking.
Just basically the road painting part?
Yes.
Okay. And then, other parts of it are going to other parts in that geographical area, not necessarily to Thirteenth Street?
That is correct.
Okay.
Appreciate the outreach. It sounds very good. A lot of effort went into that. Was there any outreach to those that commute through this neighborhood and use it just as a commuter route, as opposed to living there and traveling on it?
Here's what I will say. This is how I'll answer that. We have Ninth, Tenth, Thirteenth, Sixteenth, and Seventeenth. I have been hired, I have 5,200-some supervisors. I have been hired to advocate for what they're telling me that they want. We want to improve the quality of life for those 5,200 people who are directly affected every day in this area. So, I'm just here, no, I have not talked to people outside, but my concern is the people who have to deal with the traffic issues and the safety issues every single day. So, that's why I'm here.
I guess I would never imagine a neighborhood that would not jump at the chance to eliminate through traffic.
Sure.
And I would say, just as a follow-up, so we had the Everett and the Near South, both of those separate neighborhood association meetings back during the planning phase. Certainly, all those folks were involved during kind of the original revitalization plan, but then the third, the final meeting that we had was our typical at-large public meeting. We held it at the F Street Rec Center, did notifications. We did message boards along the corridor for about a week and a half prior to that meeting to announce the date and time. And so, I think we reached, you know, there were definitely some people there, commuters. There was a couple people that were, you know, not happy about the project initially. We talked with them about some parking alternatives and things. And so, yeah, I mean, I thought we had a decent mix of at-large stakeholders as well due to those announcements in the typical public meeting.
Councilwoman Lamb.
So, I do have some concerns also. The Los Angeles, here's been my experience in Lincoln, is that generally speaking, we are a decade or two, or maybe even more, behind what's happening on the west or the east coast in a lot of instances. There are some things where we're pioneers, but you said that Federal Highway has been doing this for thirty years, three decades, I think you said. And so, during that time, we've been looking at South Twenty-seventh, as was mentioned by my colleague, which has a two-plus-middle right now, the three-lane road. And we've been talking about expanding that in order to be able to accommodate the traffic flow. Okay, so now, now we're talking about moving to the three-lane concept like they're doing maybe in LA, but it sounds like LA and perhaps those other places that have been doing it for years are experiencing backlash from that. And I don't want us to be twenty years behind the backlash. It makes more sense to look at what have the failures been to this point and really analyze how that might impact us in the future and if we have similar issues that they might have in LA. Although, like I said, it's been ten to twenty years. I hate to see us do it now, just as they're rejecting it in other places because we obviously didn't embrace it when they were embracing it over this last thirty years. Do you have any concerns about that at all?
For this project and what we've analyzed, you know, and what we know from a professional engineering standpoint, no, I don't have concerns. I mean, respect and appreciate all your comments, and I don't dispute at all what Councilwoman Christian was saying about the Los Angeles experience and that there probably haven't been some projects that have, you know, I don't know the specifics of traffic volumes or the layout and the detail there. I know, prior to joining the city, I was, had the fortune of working on a few of these projects. Farron Street, St. Joseph, Missouri is a corridor that carries about 18,000 cars a day. We did exactly this type of project. It was a fabulous hit with the community, operates fine. I know the city of Omaha, previously and currently right now, are working on Twenty-Fourth Street, Thirtieth Street. They're doing four-lane undivided to three-lane streets with bike lanes, about six miles worth of exactly this project, like we're doing here. So, you know, some pros and cons of, you know, individual intersections, things that we need to make sure are aware of. We're looking at a couple locations on the north end for some bus turnouts in the narrower section that I think would, again, even though we don't have those on the south segment that operates pretty well, are a couple enhancements that could improve traffic flow on this north end. But, yeah, just from what we see, what we've analyzed, what we can do with a couple of the signals at A and G and just the dynamics of this project, we see huge safety benefits. I think we see traffic flow benefits, and so, no, don't really have those concerns.
Thank you. And I have two more quick questions of that. Number one, I just wanted to clarify. You were saying in this stretch of road, the eight to 10,000 a day, that 800 to 1,000 of those take place at peak times in the morning? So, that's a 800 to 1,000 cars? And you had said an hour, but I, is that, I wanted to make sure. Because I know it's eight to 10,000 a day. So, when you say 800 to 1,000 an hour, how many hours are in peak time in the morning and then in the afternoon?
So, we kind of try to analyze worst of the worst. So, the worst AM peak hour and the worst PM peak hour and in general. And those are illustrated here. I might not do as good a job of Mark of finding those graphics, but, so when we say 10% of that volume, that would be a two-way volume, so maybe 1,000 cars per hour. And if it's a 60-40 split, so in the morning, more people northbound into downtown, there might be 600 northbound, 400 southbound. So, again, 600 plus 400 is 1,000. 1,000 is 10% of 10,000. That's kind of how the numbers work out. We actually collected peak hour turning movement volumes, eight hours a day.
What are the peak hours? That's really what I'm wondering. How many are included in each of that?
So, it's typically, oh, it's always one hour. The highest one hour between seven and nine in the morning and four to six in the evening. It's the highest one, it's the highest four consecutive 15-minute intervals. So, it's usually seven, or, excuse me, 7:30 to 8:30, 7:15 to 8:15 in the morning.
You're just counting motorized vehicles, not bicycles and cars and pedestrians and?
Well, our traditional methodology, when we do these turning movement counts, is to count all vehicles, all pedestrians. So, these numbers here, the numbers that we're quoting, would just be vehicular volumes, but as part of that count, we also have data on bike usage and pedestrians crossing the street as well.
Excuse me, what were those afternoon hours again?
It's the highest one hour between four and six.
Four and six.
So, again, usually 4:30, 5:30, 4:45 to 5:45. Depends on location throughout the city, intersection and so forth.
Other questions?
Talk a little bit more about pedestrian crossings. What's the plan there?
Yeah, so, one of the things that's become apparent is the great usage at the F Street Rec Center, you know, the crosswalk that's there. Our plan is to implement an RFB, or one of our rectangular rapid flashing beacons, signed, marked crosswalk with the flashing beacons that are push-button controlled. We've also seen similar patterns of higher pedestrian crossings down at D Street. That's the older location, if you remember some years ago, where there was a traffic signal that went out of business due to some bad Mother Nature. And then, based on counts, it didn't satisfy federal requirements, didn't satisfy warrants to go rebuild that signal. So, that's been something that's been on our radar to at least try to get back and enhance pedestrian safety at D Street. So, we see as part of this project, addressing crosswalks for sure at those two locations.
And I guess on that note, with the use of the rectangular rapid flashing beacons or RFBs, best practices would tell us that we should not install those at this F Street Rec Center under existing conditions of pedestrians trying to cross four lanes without having a center island or a refuge. Whereas, best practices and what some other communities are doing with the three-lane section, that is more conducive to that type of device at a marked and signed pedestrian crossing.
One last thing for me before I think of something else. Have there been any changes in signalization along this stretch of Thirteenth Street in the last two to three years?
Changes in signalization?
Have we put in new signals? Have we taken out signals? Modified anything?
Just the signal that was lost to weather damage at D Street, which was, I think, in 2015. Otherwise, no.
So, that was removed?
Yeah, again, Mother Nature took it down. And then, again, as Lonnie indicated, traffic volumes do not meet the criteria in which we follow to install traffic signals. And so, for that reason, it has not been reconstructed.
Yeah, thank you. So, you mentioned buses and turnouts. Right now, we do have a route that uses Thirteenth Street in each direction. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay. And so, under the two-plus-a-middle with bike lanes, currently, well, if that were, under the current structure, where would those buses pull over without cutouts? Just right up to the curb? Would it be crossing the bike lane?
It would be, yes. So, yeah, so the buses would still be pulling to the curb as they do today. And as, obviously, today, they're occupying that outside through lane, at least on that north stretch. In this case, yeah, they would be occupying the space in which the bike lane would be in place.
And so, then, if bikes were using that lane, they would be having to turn out into traffic to go around the bus?
Either that or wait for the bus to proceed, yes.
So, they're currently blocking traffic. They would be blocking buses if we went with the proposal you're suggesting. And bicycles?
Yes.
Buses are currently blocking traffic.
Well, but there's another lane, right? So, they're currently blocking traffic, but the bike lane is going to go five, so it was still five feet, so it would still block traffic partially on the bike lane. And it would have to cross the bike lane, right?
Well, on the south end, where we've got that extra width, keep in mind where we've got that buffer and where we're eliminating some of that parking, the bus would be out of the traffic lane, which is why on the north end, we're looking at the potential for a turnout to get them totally out of a, out of a traffic lane.
Okay, are there any buses that run on Eleventh or Fourteenth where those other bike lanes are currently? Do you know?
I don't believe there are any on Fourteenth Street.
Eleventh?
Eleven, I believe, yeah.
I have to pull up Startran Route Map.
Eleven up Lincoln Mall, then down to DaVinci's, and it turns west there.
I trust that. I trust that.
Thank you.
Sorry. Councilman Schreutsch has some questions, and I actually have some questions. Didn't you finish?
You know, there are quite a few school zones on South Thirteenth Street. I know, I used to live down that way and drove to the Capitol to work every day in the morning. You didn't go very fast because there are like three different school zones in there. So, the speed that you can travel during, during school days is kind of challenged there because of that, not suggesting that it be otherwise. It's just an observation that that's also a piece of this turf, too.
I was going to ask you to pull up slide number 22. I wanted to talk about that one for a second.
Sure. Yeah, this was just kind of a catch-all here, I guess, of just some other street segments, at least ones that popped off the top of our head. And this kind of gives you, I guess, a little bit of frame of mind if you're curious about another three-lane street in our fine city and what the traffic volume it carries. So, a list of them there, anyway.
I use Thirty-third quite a bit from Cornhusker to A Street, and I never really perceived it as three different, four different segments, right? That north segment from Holdridge up carries a lot more traffic than Holdridge, but it never seems to be a problem. I have not experienced a problem. Let me say it like that. I have not experienced a problem. Other questions for these fine presenters?
If not, well, we've got this, and we can send this information to you, too.
That's the study?
Well, this is just another catchie that has some of the graphics and the volume.
Councilman, who do you agree, does have one additional question?
Quick Google search does have some of these articles about road diet problems in some of these cities, but I, some of the ones that I saw found that they went from three to two, like you mentioned, in certain cases, not all, but a couple of the articles. And I think one thing that I can say about Portland, the experience, I mean, the population growth there has skyrocketed. They are dealing with a massive influx of residents and they're... They are dealing with a massive influx of residents, and they're city divided by a river, which really hampers traffic in that town. So I don't know that they're a great comparison point for us in terms of population growth and geographical, sort of topography. LA, I mean, traffic has been a nightmare for there forever, also not a well, you know, planned cities. I don't know if that's a good comparison. I think it would be interesting if you could bring us some information about maybe more comparable cities in terms of topography and population size, and four to two, that might be useful for us as we make decisions.
Yeah, we'll pull down the Los Angeles one, too. I mean, I'm curious, we'll, we'll take a look at what, Councilman Christensen, I mean, there, maybe there's something that we can learn from that to make sure we do, you know, on this project, so, yeah, we'll pull that down.
What caught my attention the most was the recall petition.
I'm going to ask a really weird question. I appreciate the traffic studies and the traffic counts and the hours it was done. Those were all Monday through Friday, was there any look at weekend traffic?
Um, other than kind of review, other than reviewing, you know, some of the parking and things like that on a weekend, no. I mean, our typical process is we do eight-hour counts during typical weekday time periods. Once in a while, we get into special event traffic management for Husker football or things like that. We'll collect some Saturday counts, but usually they're, in most cases, drastically lower than, you know, typical weekday commuter rush hour time periods, so it's not a critical analysis point when we're looking at how much delay or queuing or things there is that the traffic volumes are simply quite a bit less, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you very much. That concludes our pre-council. We have a director's meeting in about seven minutes. So if you'd like to stick around for the director's meeting, these young men are going to say goodbye, farewell, I'll leave the Zane peace out.